Good evening. Thank you to everyone for coming out this evening. We're going to get started. Welcome to the March 2025 Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for being here. If you are joining us this evening to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please use the sign-up sheets that are located down front. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Yes, I can. This meeting is being held in the formality to the Open Publics Meeting Act and JSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 14, 2025, and January 16, 2025, which were the annual notices. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recorder will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronics communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully regret that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices or an applause of the meeting. And if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Good, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Ms. Katamatory?
Here.
Ms. Delira?
Here.
Mr. Delator?
Here.
Mr. Grana?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Cluffel?
Here.
Ms. Norwood?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
You have a call. Thank you, Ms. Good. This is a very special meeting, and I think I know for me, it's always my favorite meeting of the year because we will be recognizing our governor's educator and educational services professionals of the year from each of our schools, then followed by our February Students of the Month. So we're grateful to have all of you come here and celebrate all of the wonderful talent that is in this district. And I will turn the meeting over to Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez to get started with the recognitions.
Good evening, members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, families, and students. Let me begin by wishing all a happy Women's History Month. The 2024 theme is moving forward together, women educating and inspiring generations. As we celebrate Women's History Month in our classrooms, in our communities, and at home, we reflect upon the advances women have made, including increased earnings, advanced educational successes, and diverse job opportunities. I want to thank all of the women on our Board of Education, our superintendent, the women who are educators and leaders, and those here with us today to honor our students, the mothers, grandmothers, teachers, and sisters. Tonight is an extra special board meeting as we will be celebrating both our Students of the Month for the month of February and our Governor's Teachers and Educational Services Providers of the Professionals of the Year. Tonight, Hoboken Public Schools will have yet another reason to show off. We will begin by honoring our Students of the Month and then transition to our Governor's Awardees in a seamless fashion. As always, I'm honored to stand before you as our amazing principals come up to the podium and celebrate our students, first, and our staff second. In the words of Marva Collins, "Success doesn't come to you, you've got to go to it." Please give us your attention as we celebrate our students and all of their hard work, dedication, and desire to simply put, go to it. We will begin the recognition with Joseph F. Brandt's Principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will celebrate his selection at the podium and will then introduce the Connors' Principal, Ms. Addy. She will follow the same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Principal Shannon of Wallace Elementary, Principal Sorfin of Hoboken Middle, and Principal Pica Pietra of Hoboken High School. Once the students have been honored, I will return to the podium, share brief comments, and then each principal will also return to share their thoughts on their school's governor/awardees. They will receive their awards and beautiful flowers and will stand by for pictures with their families. And with that, I would ask Principal Bartlett to take over the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez. Good evening to the Board of Education and Dr. Johnson. Welcome everyone here tonight. And at this point, I would like to ask Hannah Kohler to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Hannah Kohler, the Brandt School Student of the Month for February 2025. Hannah was nominated by her fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Faruk. Mrs. Faruk said Hannah demonstrates exceptional qualities that make her a role model for peers and an outstanding representative of our school community. She consistently strives for academic success, maintaining high grades and a strong work ethic. She actively participates in class discussions, completes all assignments on time, and seeks to deepen her understanding of class material. As a leader in the classroom and beyond, Hannah sets a positive example. She treats staff and students with kindness and respect. Her friendly and encouraging attitude contributes to a welcoming and supportive school environment. Hannah overcomes challenges with determination and continuously seeks improvement in both academic and personal development. Her dedication, kindness, and leadership make a lasting impact on our school community. Hannah previously earned a medal for successfully completing a 5K race, demonstrating her perseverance and commitment to fitness. Additionally, she has two soccer trophies, which reflect her skill, teamwork, and passion for the sport. However, she said her most cherished achievement is being honored as a Student of the Month back in first grade, a recognition of her academic effort, positive attitude, and dedication to learning at such a young age. Outside of school, Hannah has a passion for both sports and the arts. She plays basketball and the clarinet, participates in hip-hop dance, lacrosse, and running. Her favorite subject is math, and she appreciates its logic and problem-solving challenges. She likes drawing and bringing her ideas to life visually. Hannah aspires to attend Penn State for college before her career as an interior designer. Mrs. Angley and I think that that's a fantastic choice of a school. She said this achievement, Hannah said about being honored here tonight, "This achievement fills me with a deep sense of pride and joy, knowing that my hard work and dedication have been noticed. It means so much to me that my teacher sees me as a hard-working student. I am grateful for this opportunity and will continue to work hard, knowing that dedication and effort pay off." As you keep working hard, Hannah, we can to see how much you will accomplish. Please join me in congratulating Hannah Kohler, our Brandt Student of the Month for February. At this time, I would like to welcome to the podium the Principal of the Connors Elementary School, Ms. Juliana Addy.
At this time, I'd like to call up Emma Chu, the Connors' Student of the Month. Emma Chu is a shining star in Ms. Schmidt's third-grade class. From the moment you meet her, you can feel the warmth and kindness that radiates from her heart. Emma isn't just a student who excels in her studies, she's a true friend to everyone around her. In the classroom, Emma creates a special kind of magic. She's the first to offer a helping hand to classmates who might be struggling. Her smile and encouraging words make everyone feel welcome and valued. Whether during group projects, lunch, or recess, Emma makes sure that nobody feels left out. In our CTY program with Ms. Barsakova, Emma continues to be a beacon of excellence. What's most admirable is how she helps her classmates with math problems. She doesn't simply give away answers, she guides others through the thinking process, breaking down complex problems step by step. This kind of generosity and wisdom is rare and precious in such a young child. I had the joy of speaking with Emma today. When she learned that she was Student of the Month, she was quite shocked and a little nervous. She shared that while she excels in math, she finds ELA a little more challenging, though her perseverance shines through in everything she tackles. Emma dreams of becoming an artist one day. Outside of school, she enjoys swimming lessons and spending time with her little brother, Theo. When asked what she loves most about Connors, she mentions her teachers and how they always encourage her to push her to forward and to grow. Both Ms. Schmidt and Ms. Barsakova deeply appreciate the integrity, responsibility, and thoughtfulness that Emma brings to our school community. Her teachers and classmates feel fortunate to have her warm spirit brighten our halls every day. Emma, we are so proud of you and all that you bring to Connors Elementary School. Congratulations on being our Connors' Student of the Month. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Shannon, Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
Good evening. We are here tonight to celebrate Han Akaza, the Wallace School Student of the Month for February. Han is a first-grade student in Ms. Graham's classroom. Han has been chosen for this prestigious recognition because of his relentless hard work and remarkable progress that he has made this school year. Han truly exemplifies what it means to roar at Wallace. Recently, he received the Extraordinary Effort Award at our pep rally for his perseverance and resilience throughout the year. He is also making great strides in expanding his communication skills through various modalities. Han arrives at school every day with a bright smile, ready to take on the day with all his best efforts. Among his many accomplishments, even when tasks are difficult, Han shows up every day with dedication and a strong work ethic. Whether Han is struggling in a subject or a personal situation, he remains committed to doing his best. Han shows a deep commitment to personal growth. One of his favorite moments is when he sings songs during his morning meeting, which brings so much joy to his day. Han works very hard every day to complete his tasks. His dedication and growth in developing critical skills are truly inspiring. It is clear that he is well on his way to achieving even greater success in the future. Keep up the amazing work, Han. We are so very proud of you. Let's hear it for Han, our Wallace School Student of the Month. At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Sorfin of the Hoboken Middle School.
Good evening. Please welcome to the podium, Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for February, London Chapman. London was nominated by Ms. Scott, and after hearing all the wonderful things said about her, I could not agree more. This recognition is so well-deserved. Over the past year, London has shown tremendous growth, not just academically, but as a leader within our school community. She approaches her work with determination and focus, always striving to do her best. But what truly sets London apart is her kindness and generosity. She doesn't just succeed, she lifts others up along the way. When she finishes her work, she immediately looks for ways to help her classmates, offering guidance and support without hesitation. London is also a person of strong character. She stands up for what she believes in, treats others with respect, and carries herself with confidence. Watching her grow into an incredible young person she is today has been nothing short of inspiring. Ms. Francesca, who you'll meet later this evening, shares that London embodies the true spirit of kindness and compassion. She's not only, she not only excels academically, but uplifts those around her. She checks in on others, offering support when they need it the most. Her confidence and warm-hearted nature make her a joy to be around and an inspiration to us all. London, I hope you always stay true to yourself and continue to shine like the bright star that you are. Ms. Scott spoke about her impact in the classroom. London has made incredible strides to share in both ELA and social studies. She creates a positive learning environment through her caring nature and leadership skills. She even assists her in times of need and helps keep the classroom on track. Beyond that, she's a talented artist who inspires others through her creativity. She hopes to attend an art school in the future, and I have no doubt she will achieve anything she sets her mind to. Her classmates echo these sentiments, describing her as someone they can always rely on and someone who always has their backs, no matter what. Not only in her school community, is her school community proud of her, but London's family is ecstatic when they heard the news. London's mom sent this beautiful quote, "For all the things my hands have held, the best by far has been you. We love you beyond all in this world." And of course, no honor would be complete without a special shout-out from her brother Levi, who responded, "London, jeez, congratulations. I'm so proud of you, and I love you." Finally, in her own words, London simply said, "I'm excited to get this award for all the hard work that I've put in. London, as I mentioned to your mom the other day on the phone, you are not just excelling, your newfound self-confidence is making you shine brighter than ever. You have grown into a confident, compassionate leader, and we are so incredibly proud of you. We cannot wait to see all the amazing things that you will accomplish in your future. Please join me in a big round of applause for our February Student of the Month, London Chapman." At this time, I'd like to welcome the Principal of Hoboken High School, Ms. Pica Pietra.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to invite Sarah Burns to the podium, our February Student of the Month. Sarah is a quiet young lady who makes a big impact on everything she does. She is currently a junior and challenging herself with AP classes throughout the years. That serves her well, as she has a 4.3 GPA, and I am confident over the next year and a half, she will continue to thrive. Ms. Gleason shared Sarah Burns has a way of making people feel like they belong. It's not something she does for recognition or praise, it's simply who she is. I first noticed this quality on a school trip when a student, feeling left out and unsure of their place, sat quietly on the sidelines. While I was consoling them, Sarah noticed. Without hesitation, she walked over, smiled, invited them to join her group. No one asked her to step in, she just did. And in that small moment, she showed the kind of leader she is, one who lifts others up, who sees people when they feel invisible. This sense of empathy and inclusion isn't limited or isolated to isolated moments. It's woven into everything Sarah does. Whether catching for the softball team or playing volleyball, she isn't just focused on the game, she's also making sure her teammates feel supported. Whether it's encouraging a teammate after a tough play or leading by example with her relentless work ethic, Sarah is the kind of athlete every team hopes to have, but her leadership extends far beyond sports. Her teachers share the same sentiment. Sarah is a great student, conscientious, and consistent, goal-oriented, and self-driven. She's a dedicated member of Harvard Model Congress, the National Honor Society, best buddies, and student government. In each of these roles, she approaches challenges with enthusiasm, whether she's debating policy, mentoring students with disabilities, or working to create a better school environment. No matter the setting, Sarah gives her full effort, not because she has to, but because she genuinely cares. Sarah doesn't just participate, she makes an impact. She is the student who others look up to, the teammate who never gives up, and the friend who makes sure no one is left behind. Whatever she does next, I have no doubt she will continue to lead with kindness, determination, and a deep sense of purpose. Congratulations, Sarah.
Now, we will move into our Governor's Awardees. Our educators are truly at the core of all that we do and all that makes this school district great. To have been nominated by your peers, students, families, and members of the community tells us that those being honored here this evening are exceptionally skilled, highly dedicated experts who inspire students of all backgrounds to learn. They are collaborators, partners with colleagues, students and families to build a strong culture of respect and success. They are leaders and innovators in educational activities in school and beyond. We admire them for all that and so much more. They are rock stars as they make the above seem seamless. They have dedication and a strong desire to excel. And with that, we will begin our Governor's Awardees portion, and I'd ask our Principal of the Joseph F. Brandt School to come on up.
At this time, I'd like to welcome Ms. Lorena Gardner up to the podium. Before I stand here and praise Mrs. Lorena Gardner for a few minutes, we need a bit of context. About seven years ago, our Superintendent Dr. Johnson entrusted me with the Principalship of Brandt. Starting that role, I found a solid foundation left by our Assistant Superintendent and former Brandt Principal, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, upon which we've built a tremendous learning community. The following cannot be understated, Lorena Gardner might be the cornerstone of that foundation. She is one of the best teachers in the field today. Mrs. Gardner is here tonight for fostering academic excellence and personal growth. Her innovative teaching methods inspire creativity and critical thinking. She is committed to creating an inclusive classroom, ensuring every student feels valued. She is praised for her passion, professionalism, and profound impact, making her a deserving recipient of this honor. Mrs. Gardner is relentless when advocating for her students. She is willing to have tough conversations. She approaches those conversations with an expert diagnosis of academic, social, and emotional needs. Her high expectations are clear, and she will accept nothing less from her students just as she expects nothing less from anyone else who has a hand in shaping them. Like many of our best teachers, Mrs. Gardner has a sharp sense of reflective practice. I've often told her that she's too hard on herself for things that don't go as planned and doesn't give herself a chance to enjoy the lessons that do. I see now that no matter how much she hears that, she will always reflect and refine. She reminds me a lot of Coach Nick Saban. Coach Saban won seven college football national championships, and when asked about which one he thinks about the most, he responded with, "The three I lost." Lorena, it's important for you to hear this. While there are days you and I talk about a lesson that didn't quite land, you win the instructional day far more often than you lose it, and we stand here today in celebration of your excellence. In education, it's so important to have a core group of your people who you can always count on. Lorena is not only one of those people for the second-grade team and the staff at large, judging by the vast number of her colleagues who are here tonight, but for me. When we needed staff members to participate in the interview process for the New Jersey Department of Education's Promising Practices Project, Lorena didn't hesitate to say she would help. As a result, she will be part of a team attending a conference at Rutgers University so she can share our best practices with other educators, enabling her expertise to help children in other school communities. The best teachers are the ones who do the right thing because it's the right thing to do, no matter how hard that path is to walk. Lorena, thank you for walking that path for us every day. We are grateful for every step we take alongside you. Please join me congratulating our Brandt School Educator of the Year, Mrs. Lorena Gardner. And at this time, I would like to ask Mrs. Arellis Rosario to join me up at the podium. The support staff, the people who assist with everyday teaching and learning, are some of the most important people in a school. Oftentimes, there are the folks who do the unsung and gritty things over the course of a day. Sometimes, they bring lunch orders up from the cafeteria or help students with a tough lesson concept. Sometimes, they give a tissue for a runny nose or to dry a tear. This is an appropriate description of Mrs. Arellis Rosario, our Brandt School Educational Service Professional of the Year. Mrs. Rosario is being honored here tonight for her impact as a kindergarten paraprofessional. She is celebrated for her compassionate approach to supporting young learners, ensuring they feel safe, nurtured, and excited to learn each day. Her ability to build strong connections with students and families has been instrumental in fostering a positive classroom environment. Her kindness, professionalism, and commitment to student success make her an invaluable member of our Brandt School community and a worthy recipient of this esteemed honor. One of the key areas of focus as we expand, excuse me, as we expand opportunities for the children and families of Hoboken is our dual-language program. Arellis has been instrumental in ensuring this program is emerging as a model for other districts. Oftentimes, when I pass by or visit Room 210, she is taking an active role in the class. She works hand-in-hand with her cooperating teacher to meet the needs of the children entrusted to her, and our dual-language program students love and appreciate her each day. Arellis has been an integral part of the kindergarten team as a paraprofessional at Brandt School for over three years. Her dedication and commitment to each student is unwavering. Ms. Santiago shared Arellis brings patience, kindness, and creativity to the dual-language space. She greets her students with compassion and a smile. Whether it's helping students sound out a word, find a missing letter, or counting, Ms. A is always there. Past or present, they have all been incredibly lucky to receive her love and support. We indeed are lucky to have Arellis at our school. And you are an irreplaceable and beloved member of our Brandt School family. Please join me in a warm round of congratulations for Mrs. Arellis Rosario, our Brandt Educational Service Professional of the Year. At this time, I'd like to welcome back to the podium the Principal of Connors Elementary School, Mrs. Juliana Addy.
At this time, I would like to call up-
At this time, I would like to call up Ms. Kristin Schultz, our Connors Teacher of the Year. Ms. Kristin Schultz is an extraordinary educator who consistently demonstrates an unwavering commitment to her students, making her an exceptional fourth-grade teacher who truly embodies educational excellence. What sets Ms. Schultz apart is her remarkable ability to prioritize her students' success and well-being. Her classroom is a vibrant learning environment where history comes alive through her engaging and innovative teaching methods. She transforms fourth-grade history into an exciting, interactive experience that captivates her students' imaginations. Her teaching philosophy is rooted in genuine care and integrity. Ms. Schultz goes above and beyond to ensure that every student understands the material, taking extra time to explain complex concepts with patience and enthusiasm. She consistently offers heartfelt encouragement and specific compliments that boost students' confidence and motivation. Communication is another of Ms. Schultz's exceptional strengths. She maintains transparent, positive relationships with parents, regularly sharing the remarkable achievements and progress of their children. Her approachable nature makes her easy to talk to, creating a supportive network of trust among students, parents, and faculty. The overwhelming support for her Teacher of the Year nomination from students, parents, and colleagues, is a testament to her extraordinary impact. Her ability to create a fun, engaging, and nurturing learning environment sets her apart as a truly exceptional educator. It is for these reasons that Kristin Schultz is so deserving of Teacher of the Year. She embodies the very best of our profession, an educator who transforms lives through passion, dedication, and an unwavering commitment to student success. Please join me in giving a round of applause to Ms. Kristin Schultz. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Kenny Bates, our Educational Services Professional of the Year. As an instructional paraprofessional at Connors, Mr. Bates truly exemplifies the highest standards of educational support and student engagement. He is the heart and soul of what makes our support staff so special, bringing warmth, dedication, and exceptional skill to our school community every single day. Mr. Bates is a model paraprofessional who consistently goes above and beyond his expected duties. His proactive approach is remarkable. He takes initiative without waiting to be directed, seamlessly supporting both academic and behavioral needs of students. Whether leading an instructional center or managing classroom dynamics, he demonstrates exceptional professional skills. Every teacher begs to have Mr. Bates as their class paraprofessional. This is a testament to how wonderful he really is. What makes Mr. Bates truly extraordinary is his unique approach to student support. He has mastered that perfect balance between positive encouragement and firm accountability, creating an environment where students feel both supported and inspired to reach higher. Children know that Mr. Bates believes in them completely, while also expecting their very best. His ability to build meaningful relationships extends far beyond the classroom walls, as we see in his dedicated work with our After-School Passport to Learning Program, where he connects and nurtures students across all grade levels. During our recent school-wide STEM Expo Day, one of the first people I asked to help with parent check-ins was Mr. Bates, along with Ms. Hamberry, who's here tonight. I made this choice because not only does he know every parent and child by name, but he brings such genuine friendliness and warmth and welcoming energy to everything he does. Of course, the moment I asked, true to Mr. Bates's nature, he didn't hesitate for a second to offer his help. This perfectly illustrates something that may not appear in his formal job description but defines who he is: A person who steps up simply because he considers himself an integral part of the Connors family. Mr. Bates represents the very, very best of what educational support professionals bring to our school. His presence makes our community stronger, kinder, and more effective at meeting the needs of every child. At this time, please join me in congratulating Mr. Kenny Bates, our Educational Service Professional of the Year. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Martin Shannon, the Principal of Wallace Elementary School.
It is my privilege to announce the Wallace School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Deanna Valari. It is truly an honor to stand before you tonight as we celebrate the heart of our schools, our teachers. Each day, our teachers go above and beyond to inspire, challenge, and support us. They dedicate their time, energy, and passion to helping students grow not just academically but also as individuals. Today, we are here to recognize one teacher who has gone above and beyond in ways that truly set her apart. Ms. Valari is someone who embodies everything we hope for in an educator. She is passionate, dedicated, and always puts the needs of her students first. Ms. Valari is not only a guide in the classroom, but also a mentor, a listener, and a source of encouragement. Whether it's going the extra mile to help a struggling student, providing extra resources, or simply creating a safe space where every student feels valued, Ms. Valari has made an unforgettable impact on so many lives. Ms. Valari's classroom space is filled with positive energy, and she has created an atmosphere where students feel safe, supported, and eager to participate. Ms. Valari has a unique ability to make learning enjoyable and meaningful, and her classroom truly reflects her dedication to fostering curiosity and confidence in each student. Her passion for teaching is evident not just in the lessons she prepares, but in the ways that she connects with each of her students. Ms. Valari's ability to see potential and help students believe in themselves is something truly special. Her energy, patience, and unwavering commitment have shaped our community in ways words cannot fully express. Tonight, as we honor this amazing work, let us remember the impact that Ms. Valari and all teachers have that lasts far beyond the classroom walls. Teachers don't just change the lives of their students, they shape the future of our communities, our nation, and our world. Please join me in congratulating Deanna Valari for an exceptional work and dedication to all of our students. It's with great honor and gratitude that I announce this year's Educational Service Professional of the Year, Casey Bavacqua. Today, we have the privilege of honoring an individual who plays an essential role in making our school a welcoming, efficient, and supportive environment for everyone. Casey is one of our speech therapists and an essential part of our school culture. The Educational Service Professional of the Year Award recognizes someone who has gone above and beyond in their role, showing exceptional dedication, professionalism, and care in supporting our school community. Casey is the epitome of these ideals. Casey is someone who consistently goes the extra mile to help our students, staff, and families. Whether it's offering assistance with arrival and dismissal tasks, ensuring the well-being of our students, or keeping our daily routines running seamlessly, this individual's contributions make an incredible difference every day. Casey does not just bring her speech skillset and knowledge to the job, but also her heart. Her dedication is shown in the little things: Offering a helping hand when it's needed most, creating a sense of comfort and organization in what can often be a fast-paced and challenging environment. Her professionalism and commitment shine through in everything she does, and she truly embodies what it means to be a Wallace Wildcat. Let's give Casey Bavacqua a round of applause for her outstanding service to our school community. Your unwavering dedication, compassion, and positive influence on everyone you work with does not go unnoticed. We are truly fortunate to have someone as exceptional as you in our school. Thank you, Casey, for all that you do to support our students. You truly are making the difference every single day. At this time, I'd like to call Principal Sorefen back to the podium.
Good evening again. For this recognition, I ask Ms. Danielle Miller to join me at the podium. I know she has been waiting for this moment, and as our recipient, supervisor, and mentor, there is no one more fitting to help recognize his achievements. So at this time, please welcome Hoboken Middle School's Governors' Educator of the Year, Mr. Patrick Benson. Mr. Benson's an exceptional educator whose passion, creativity, and unwavering dedication have had a profound impact on Hoboken Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Sorefen. It is truly a joy to stand here and honor Mr. Benson, an educator whose impact extends far beyond the walls of his classroom. Mr. Benson is not just a theater teacher, he is a visionary, a mentor, and a guiding light for his students. He's built a junior thespian's program that boasts over fifty participants, of students creating space where they feel safe, valued, and inspired daily. His ability to connect with his students on a deep and meaningful level is remarkable. He brings out the best in each of them, encouraging creativity, confidence, and self-expression. Beyond his instructional excellence, Mr. Benson's enthusiasm is unmatched. As one of his colleagues so perfectly put it, "He is the embodiment of human sunshine." His passion is infectious, his positivity never wavers, and his commitment to his students is nothing short of extraordinary. He turns rehearsals into unforgettable experiences and ensures that every student, whether they take center stage or work behind the scenes, knows that they are a central part of something greater.
His impact reaches far beyond the stage. Whether he's leading rigorous theater lessons, coaching students through monologues, or simply greeting everyone in the hallway with his signature energy and a smile. Mr. Benson makes Hoboken Middle School a better place every single day. His productions have become a hallmark of our school, drawing in students who never imagined themselves as performers and giving them a platform to shine. The theater community at HMS thrives because of his dedication, passion, and ability to bring out the best in everyone around him. A true tribute of what the teacher truly means to our community comes directly from our students. Violet Blaylock said, "Mr. Benson is a creative and amazing teacher who always manages to make students feel confident and smile." And Logan Morrissey added, "Mr. Benson is always a fun and outgoing person. He makes learning interactive, he's an amazing director, I love his company, and he makes personalized awards for his students." For example, he gave Logan "Most Energetic" and "The Best Pepper Shaker." Is that true?
True.
True. Since that is what Logan played in this year's school play. Ms. Miller?
Tonight, we celebrate Mr. Benson not just for his well-deserved recognition, but for the lasting impact he has on his students, his colleagues, and the entire middle school community. His work is a testament to the power of education, creativity, and mentorship. Hoboken Middle School is stronger, more vibrant, and more inspired because of him.
Mr. Benson, on behalf of the entire school community, we thank you for your dedication, your talent, and your commitment to your students, and it's my great honor to officially recognize you as Hoboken Middle School's Governors' Educator of the Year. Please join me in celebrating Mr. PJ Benson. It is now my honor to recognize someone truly special tonight. Please welcome our Educational Service Professional of the Year, Ms. Francesca Shankoff. As we celebrate this special honor tonight, I'd like to share a short story that I feel we will all appreciate. When we asked Carmelo, Ms. Francesca's three-year-old son, what he thought about his mom receiving this recognition, he confidently replied, "No, she's not." Which, I have to say, is exactly the kind of honesty that you'd expect from a preschooler. But after a brief moment of reflection, it hit him just how deserving his mom is. And with all the excitement in the world, he shouted, "Yay, Mama!" Yay, Mama! And that right there says it all. Francesca Shankoff, our Counselor with Fortitude Youth Services, is the kind of person who quietly goes above and beyond, never seeking recognition, yet making an undeniable impact on everyone around her. Her warmth, dedication, and her heart make our school a better place every single day. In just two short years, Francesca has become an essential part of the Hoboken Middle School family. Though she may be early in the journey with us, she carries herself with the grace, professionalism, and expertise of a seasoned veteran. Her impact is undeniable. Not only does she provide unwavering support to our students, but she also builds strong relationships with families, ensuring that every child feels valued, heard, and supported. What sets Francesca apart isn't just knowledge and skill, it is her heart. She approaches every situation with empathy and compassion, making her a trusted ally for parents and a pillar of support for our staff. Parents know they can count on her in times of uncertainty, and colleagues appreciate her positivity, her insight, and her unwavering willingness to help. But let's be honest, what really makes Francesca irreplaceable is her ability to brighten any room when she walks into it. Whether it's greeting students with a warm smile, offering a reassuring word, or working behind the scenes to ensure every student's needs are met, her presence alone brings comfort and confidence to those around her. She doesn't just support our school, she lifts it up. Personally, Francesca, I want to thank you for always checking in with me, whether it's a quick "How's your day, boss?" or a knowing smile that says, "Yep, it's one of those days." Your kindness and thoughtfulness never go unnoticed. Your support and positive energy make such a difference on those days, and just a simple check-in from you is exactly what I need some days. So, thank you. You are an essential part of the school, and I'm beyond grateful. Tonight, we celebrate Francesca not just for the title she has earned, but for the profound difference she makes every single day. And to make this moment even more special, we have a few words from those who know her best. Her teammate, Ms. Acosta, shared that Francesca has been an incredible partner during her time at HMS. From the moment they met before school year began, she knew they'd make a great team. From day one, Francesca made her feel welcome, created a seamless transition. She's supportive, caring, and truly embodies what it means to be a team player. Another student shared... Another student shared, "Ms. Francesca is deserving of this award because she's the best. She's the best because she makes..." She is the best because she makes me happy when I see her smile. I feel safe when I'm in her room, and she makes me laugh. She is fun to be around, and she has helped me a lot. Ms. Francesca told me that she is beyond grateful for this recognition. She has wanted to do this job since she was eight years old. And so appreciative to have the opportunity to provide kids with a safe space to be seen and heard. Clearly, Francesca, you are the piece of the puzzle that we have been looking for. Francesca, your dedication, kindness, and commitment to...does not go unnoticed. You are an invaluable part of the Hoboken Middle School family, and we are beyond grateful for you. On behalf of all of us, thank you for everything you do, and congratulations on this well-deserved honor.
At this time, I would like to welcome back to the podium the Principal of Hoboken High School, Ms.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Adam Anderson, Hoboken High School's Governor's Educator of the Year. For the past six years, Adam Anderson has been an integral part of our school community. When he first joined as a math teacher, it was clear that he had a passion for learning. But what stood out even more was his eagerness to take on new challenges. Over the years, that drive has led him to expand his teaching portfolio far beyond mathematics. Today, he teaches AP Computer Science, AP Computer Science A, Project Lead the Way Computer Science, Project Lead the Way Principles Engineering, and he even teaches aviation, each course requiring additional training and dedication, which he embraces without hesitation. Every year, I ask Adam if he's willing to take on something new, and without fail, his response is an enthusiastic yes. While this means sacrificing summer hours for training, he never sees it as a burden. Instead, he approaches it as an opportunity to grow. Despite his deep love for mathematics, where he is currently pursuing a doctorate, his impact extends far beyond numbers and equations. He was the first teacher to launch our aviation program. Starting with only a handful of students, under his leadership, the program has flourished with enrollment doubling as more students became inspired by his teaching. Adam's influence is felt in every corner of our school. He has a gift for making complex subjects approachable, using innovative teaching strategies that spark curiosity and engagement. Whether he's explaining mathematical theories, engineering concepts, or aviation principles, he has a way of bringing lessons to life. His students don't just learn, they develop a mindset of problem-solving and critical thinking that prepares them for the future. Beyond the classroom, Adam is just as dedicated. As the coach of esports and the advisor of the robotics club, he invests countless hours in mentoring students, helping them grow and succeed in ways that go beyond academics. Watching him interact with students, it's clear that he isn't just teaching, he's inspiring. And if you ever saw him set up the robotics set and have the students create it, it takes like two hours, I swear, to create that whole thing. And the kids just get into it and work together. Adam's impact on students, staff, and our entire school community is undeniable, and it is an honor to recognize his contributions. And last, but certainly not least, is Ms. Maggie Tigler, Hoboken High School's Educational Specialist of the Year. Ms. Tigler demonstrates an unwavering commitment to her students' academic, emotional, and social success. As a school psychologist, Maggie goes above and beyond to meet the diverse needs of her students. Her ability to identify and address each student's unique challenges is truly remarkable. She ensures that all students receive the support they need to thrive. Maggie's dedication to the high school community is evident in her daily interactions. She understands the critical role mental health plays in student success and advocates fiercely for the well-being of her students. Whether providing support during crises or being a steady reassuring presence, she has made a profound impact on those she serves. Her ability to build meaningful relationships with students, parents, and staff sets her apart. She creates a safe space where students know they will be met with understanding and guidance. Parents be kindly of her kindness and open communication, and her collaboration with staff has strengthened the entire school community. It is clear that Maggie's passion for helping students drives her. She's deeply invested in the academic, social, and emotional growth, ensuring each one reaches their highest potential. Steve Jobs said, "The only way to do great work is to love what you do and keep learning as you go." As a principal, I have had the pleasure of watching Maggie grow over the past two years. She has gained confidence, speaks up when she has questions or opinions, and has truly come into her own role. Every day, she continues to develop her expertise and make a lasting impact, which makes me extremely proud. Maggie, you exemplify everything I could hope for in this profession: dedication, empathy, expertise, and a relentless drive to support and uplift students. You are the best.
One more round of applause. Congratulations to all our teachers, staff, students, and educational services professionals recognized tonight. We are so incredibly proud of you. I know that some of you may have early alarm clocks, early bedtimes. We're going to take a brief three-minute break to let anyone who needs to exit get on with their evenings, and we'll be back in just a couple of minutes with the business portion of our meeting. Next, we're going to move into committee reports. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report this evening?
No, I do not, but I want to say this will be my next-to-last board meeting. It would have been my last board meeting. However, we moved the budget meeting until next Monday. I would like to take the time to thank the board and the superintendent and this full staff for welcoming me in this district, and I thank you. It has been a great six years here. Thank you so much.
Norwood, do you have a curriculum report for us this evening?
I do, thank you. The curriculum committee met on Thursday, March 6th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. Kana, and myself. There are five curriculum agenda items, and the committee recommends all for approval. The first three are approval of grant submissions for various things: $50,000 to an esports grant, $20,000 for an innovation grant, and $50,000 for a submission for a New Jersey STEM Pathways grant. 9.04 is the acceptance of a grant for expanding access to computer science courses for $20,000. 9.05 is the approval of a variety of field trips. There were STEM expos were held for all K through eight students, and they were funded by the HPEF. We thank them for their support. All were attended by parents and very well-attended. There will be a family math night on April 5th in the Hoboken High School gymnasium. Look forward to a big game space with giant manipulatives and life-size interactive math mats. There's been a variety of teacher professional development that is ongoing, including Google educators certification programs for some of the teachers that will be happening through to mid-April. An iXL professional development, which continues to be offered during staff meetings. The March 10th meeting will be focused on analytics. There was dual-language information sessions that were held on February 25th with close to 150 parents and guardians attending. If you're interested in the FAQs and the presentation, they're on the district's website. There was an eSTEM challenge at NJIT, and six grade-five students from each elementary school will be participating in these teams, which feature a community problem-solving question. I know it's been a long meeting. The last one that I'm going to pick up is that on Tuesday, March 25th, at Spockus High School, the Hudson County School Board's Unsung Hero Award Ceremony will be honoring Hoboken High School's 12th-grade student Serenity Perez as our unsung hero. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood, and congratulations to Serenity on being the Unsung Hero Award winner. Now, we go to facilities with Mr. Granja.
Thank you, Ms. McGurk. The facilities committee met on March 6th, and in attendance were Mr. Clubbell, Ms. Delara, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Johnson, myself. It is a very light summary that I sent you this month, two items for the consent agenda, 13.01...excuse me, 14.01 and 14.02, which the committee recommends for approval. I would just like to note a note of kudos to this committee. As the district grows, as we expand, as our curriculum expands, as our extracurricular activity expands, the demands on our facilities continues to grow, and it is a real challenge to sort through not only the priority, which is the district schools and affiliated organizations, and then to be fair to the rest of the organizations that try to get a slice of our facilities. So, thanks very much, this committee, for acting fairly and making the bestest choice as possible. Thank you. That is my update.
Thank you, Mr. Granja. Mr. Clubbell, do you have a finance report for us this evening?
Thank you. The finance committee met on Friday, March 7th. Joining me were Ms. Angley, Mr. Delatorre, Mr. Granja, Ms. Good, and Ms. Lopez. The committee did review tonight's finance agenda and recommends all for approval. Just a couple of clarifications, as I sent out my revised notes from over the weekend. Item 1108 increases the amount of our 2024-2025 contract with Children's Specialized Hospital for Physical Therapy and Occupational Therapy for our students. Last year, we approved the 2024-25 contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $200,000. We're going to have to increase that in anticipation of the necessary services through the end of the school year. 1111 renews the contract with Chartwell's for food services in the next school year, 2025-26. And 1112 is the price for breakfast and lunch next year, which are increasing 20 cents. Of course, for those who qualify, we'll still receive free reduced-price meals. 1113 concerns employee retirement savings plans and appoints the company that will administer the plan at no cost to the district. What I learned is 403B and 457, new terms for me, are kind of like what I'm familiar with 401Ks, or tax-sheltered annuity plans offered to public schools through a program with the IRS. At the meeting, we also discussed briefly the 2025-26 budget, which is in the final stages of development by the administration. The finance committee will meet again this Thursday for a preview, and then the budget will be presented to the board at a special public meeting next Monday, March 17th at 7:00 p.m. Then, as we do every year, the board will vote to send the budget to the county superintendent for their review. The final budget will present at a public budget hearing next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clubbell. Ms. Katamatory, do you have a governance report for us this evening?
Yes, very sure. The governance committee met on Friday, March 7th, 2025, in attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Norwood, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Clubbell, and myself. This month's agenda is very typical and fairly light, with a number of items regarding volunteers for various district events, resignations, leave requests, appointments, modifications, compensation approvals and the like, as well as workshop approvals and monthly HIB report for each school. The committee recommends all agenda items for approval. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katamatory. Ms. Delara, do you have a wellness report for us this evening?
I do. The wellness committee met on March 6th, in attendance were myself, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Kana, Ms. Delatorre, and Dr. Johnson. One item up for approval tonight, 7.01, which is the Policy 5111A, Access to Education and Student Privacy and Immigration Enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. I have a brief president's report this evening, but as Ms. Good alluded to, next week, we will be meeting to have the adoption of the tentative budget for next year, but it will also mark the last public meeting we'll have prior to Joyce's retirement. So I wanted to take this opportunity to say a few words. Joyce joined us here in 2019, and if you think about all of the things that have happened between 2019 and now, I think we can all say that we have been through a heck of a lot together. Sometimes it's easy to forget all the things that happen over a period of time like that, because certainly there are some highlights and some really tough moments, and I think as a...speaking on behalf of, you know, myself and I think everyone here, you know, we have seen highs and really lows as a group. We've been through some tough personal things together, we've been through loss with you, and on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank you for your dedication to this district and its students. That never wavered once, even when, you know, you were going through some incredibly tough times, and I personally thank you for that. We are so grateful for your service, and it was our privilege to have you as a part of this district and this team. So, thank you so much for all that you've done for Hoboken. I also want to add congratulations this evening to our varsity boys basketball team, who lost a sectional championship by one point on Saturday. This team represented Hoboken very well on the court, and while we know the outcome is not what you might have hoped, we are all very, very proud of you. Red Wing Cody Pfeiffer also excelled this week in wrestling at the NJSIA championship at Atlantic at Atlantic City's Boardwalk Hall. With a 12th-place finish, Cody is the first Red Wing to wrestle and win at Boardwalk Hall. We congratulate Cody on a very successful wrestling career as a Red Wing. You will be missed as you move on to your next endeavor. Additionally, the high school mock trial team has advanced to Phase Two Regionals of the state tournament. They defeated both Sussex and Passaic Counties in Phase One. So, we wish them all of the best as they move forward in their tournament. And I know there'll be lots more exciting news coming from HMS and HSS when our student representatives rejoin us for our April meeting. We're now going to move to public comments on agenda items. Don't know if we have.
Ms. Roseanne Versace?
Just a reminder before we open for public comment. Over the years, and most recently, the board has been asked why it does not prohibit or stop comments about school district employees from individuals who speak during public comment portion of the meeting. The short answer is that the law prevents the board from censoring comments made about district personnel. The board does not condone, nor is the board a party to, comments as such. However, just because a speaker may have the right to say what he or she feels, it does not absolve a speaker from liability for any comments that could be viewed as defamatory by an employee. Should speakers say something that subjects them to a civil suit, the responsibility falls squarely on the speaker and not on the board. Board policy requires that all speakers please state your name, municipality of residence, and business affiliation if any. Speakers are allowed five minutes and Vice President Angley will quietly motion with 30 seconds left. Please address all comments to the chair. Board policy states that the board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate between speakers and board members or, or the superintendent.
Good evening, Roseanne Versace, Hoboken Wallace School. On behalf of the Hoboken Education Association, I would like to congratulate our Governors, Educators, and Educational Support Professionals of the Year who were honored here this evening. It is so gratifying to hear the wonderful accolades and heartfelt words spoken by our administrators about the incredible staff in each of our schools. Every person honored here tonight has committed themselves to a career that is quantified not by financial success or elaborate titles. Instead, they chose education because of a feeling deep inside that made them want to make a difference. The path has not always been easy and over the years, it has become increasingly challenging. But everyone honored here tonight recognizes how helping students grow and succeed academically and personally is a reward that is worth the challenges. To teach is to be selfless and unselfish, often putting personal needs aside in deference to giving themselves to their students. If you have ever been influenced by a teacher, and I know you have, you know and remember the impact that one special person had on your life. I can recall many teachers from both my elementary, high school, and even college days who had a significant impact on me and shaped my decision to become a teacher. And while it may have been many decades ago, the feeling of being cared for, encouraged, and inspired is just as fresh today as it was so many years ago. So, in closing, thank you to our educators for educating, inspiring, supporting, and valuing the students of the Hoboken Public School District. Thank you for helping them conquer their challenges and discover their strengths. And as we celebrate the achievements of our honored teachers and ESPs tonight, let us thank all the teachers and ESPs in our district for believing in the power of education and for nurturing the future leaders of tomorrow. And before I close, I just want to say, Joyce, it's been a pleasure. I don't want to get too mushy because I'll probably cry, but thank you for everything. It's been so great to work with you and I wish you all the best in your retirement. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
Ms. Erica Alvarez? Good evening. Erica Alvarez, Wallace School, HSCA president. I just wanted to second what Roseanne said and on behalf of our local, the time that we worked together wasn't that long, but it's been amazing and, you know, very refreshing to work with someone that's so professional and just, you know, I really want to congratulate you on your retirement, Ms. Good, and thank you for everything you've done. Thank you. I also wanted to speak on behalf of the entire Hoboken School Employees Association membership. I want to personally congratulate each of our paraprofessionals that were awarded tonight for your unwavering dedication and hard work. As paraprofessionals, you play an essential role in shaping the learning environment for our students. Your compassion, patience, and commitment to supporting both students and staff did not go unnoticed. It is because of your efforts that our schools continue to thrive and grow. Thank you for the vital work you do every day to make a difference in the lives of the students we serve. Your continued passion and professionalism inspire us all and I look forward to seeing all of the great things that we will accomplish together in the years ahead. Thank you for recognizing such wonderful, wonderful paraprofessionals and for all of, you know, the hard work they do. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, with no further speakers on agenda items, we will move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Good, can you call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Granja?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Clubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Do we have any speakers signed up for comments on agenda and non-agenda items?
No, we do not.
Thank you. So, we will be going into executive sessions for the purpose of discussing matters covered by attorney-client privilege. We will not be taking any action, so we will just be coming back to close the meeting and we will be approximately, half hour? We'll be approximately one-half hour. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Good, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Granja?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Clubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Eight twenty-three p.m. and we're going into executive session. It is now nine thirteen p.m. and we are just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Good, please call the roll.
Give me one second. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Granja?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Clubbell?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Good. And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.